So, we're going to be standing right over here for the public testimony. So here's the deal. If you are called upon to speak today and you would like to leave your contact information, because if we go back and we find out at some point that we could not record it and put it where we can access it, we can contact you and have you come back on the 16th and you'd be able to give your testimony again on the 16th. So, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Ninety-eight percent, I've mentioned that over $11 million is coming into this community. Ninety-eight percent is coming from other places in the state of California. That is... Hold on. If you don't approve progress, I promise CBD hemp will come in. These jobs will be eliminated since CBD growers use columbides to harvest instead of people and do it outdoors. With unemployment at its lowest, where will they work? Who will make their car payments, their house payments, pay their outrageous rents? Will families have to go back to having two jobs and not being available for their children, creating the temptation to join a gang to have a sense of family?
No. Okay, we're back on.
Okay.
With unemployment at its lowest, where will they work? Who will make their car payments, their house payments, pay the outrageous rents? I think I already said that. So, let's go. And that's exactly what happens when you do that. So, one of the things that I wanted to share is a story from one of my people that I used to mentor. His name for this is Serge. I helped him with resumes and he didn't last at his jobs. They weren't gratifying. He washed dishes, he scrubbed floors, he washed toilets, he went to work with his mom cleaning houses when he couldn't find anything else. He has a family, a little child. He's proud now and he's no longer involved in gang activity. When you say that there was going to be a gang injunction, all these kids showed up and swore not to join gangs, to find real jobs. We were able to not pass that gang injunction and to get these kids back where they belong in society. They did this because they want to get ahead. We're setting ourselves back. This is an incredible injustice to all of these people that could work in this industry. Everything...
Thank you.
You're welcome. I bet. Yay!
All right. No clapping. We're just happy we got through.
No, it's more about accomplishment.
And I'll wave this in the last 15 seconds. How about that?
Our next speaker is Jean Souza to be followed by Amy Steinfeld. Is Jean here?
Yeah. Oh, no.
Our next speaker is Amy Steinfeld to be followed by Victor Trigio.
Victor Trigio.
Amy Steinfeld to be followed by Alejandro Rodriguez.
Good evening, honorable supervisors. I'm Amy Steinfeld, a local land use attorney here in town, and I'm here on behalf of the North County Farmers Guild. We've been working diligently with our farmers and your staff to obtain local permits and licenses. We welcome anyone here to come meet with the guild and to learn more about the regulations that come from this industry. The county's efforts, we appreciate all the county's efforts today to make the process more efficient. In fact, as noted in our letter, we support all the proposals in the CEO's presentation. But today, I want to focus on the proposed cap. First, the guild supports a carefully crafted cap, but we need more information and analysis because we want to make sure it actually addresses the concerns, which are primarily coming from the South County and a handful of wineries. We also must ensure that the farmers that are so heavily invested in this process are protected. So we offer the following. One, we believe we should be given time to work with the county on a cap that is responsive to the concerns. Two, that all farmers that have submitted a land use application and paid the hefty fees be protected and their investments not be wiped out. Three, that the cap measurement be based on the definition of canopy in the CDFA regulations. And lastly, that any cap expire 24 months after implementation. This will allow the county to adequately analyze the impacts of legal cannabis after all the permits have been granted. It's also important to note that any cap on acreage based on the existing acreage in the queue to date, the permitting queue, or the EIR would be a de facto moratorium on new cannabis activities. Such a moratorium would be illegal, as noted in the board letter. In addition, a hastily drafted cap would result in a resurgence of the black market, which your enforcement team has successfully wiped out. The bottom line, you need more time to work with our neighbors and the local wineries. Let's take our time and develop a cap that makes sense for our community. We're optimistic the wine and cannabis can coexist and create synergies together. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alejandro Rodriguez to be followed by Alfredo Santos.
Hey, Anthony.
Okay. Our next speaker is Vince. Is Vince here?
Tell us your story.
Our next speaker, Kendall Fabian.
Kendall had to leave the ranch.
Mark Byers.
Please go.
Brent Capneer to be followed by Stephen Jane.
Good afternoon, good evening. Brett McFerrin from Lowell Farms, leading cannabis brand and founder here in Santa Barbara County. One of our co-founders is from San Ynez and attended the Dunn School. I've been a cultivator since 2008 and been in Santa Barbara County since 2015 and was involved in drafting of the ordinance that we continue to work on to this day. My company made a multimillion dollar land purchase in San Ynez Valley specifically based on the regulations that are currently in place, taking into account parcel size, zoning, and distance from seven-siters or septers for a new cultivation project. We are implementing an extensive landscape plan, including a 20-acre setback from the main road, which will be non-cannabis crops, including organic food for our cannabis consumption lounge opening in West Hollywood. We have an approved LUP and unfortunately are currently under appeal. I'm strongly against changes to the Act II beyond the process that's currently in place. All these appeals will end up before you regardless of whether it's an LUP or CUP, so I don't think that making everybody go through CUP makes a lot of sense because they're all going to end up in front of you regardless. We should be able to go through the business license process while awaiting our appeal. And then one further thing, the large size of the operations that you're allowing in this county, once permitted, will bring a tremendous amount of revenue. Unlike other counties which are limiting the size, the current 4% gross receipts tax that you have, which is more than any of the other crops in this county pay, will end up providing a tremendous amount of revenue to the county. That's it.
Our next speaker is Stephen James to be followed by Jesse Saragoza.
Get your mark. Right on.
I got it. Dear Board of Supervisors, my name is Stephen James and I'm here as president of the Santa Barbara Wittners. As a resident of the San Ynez Valley and as a wine industry professional who has dedicated his career to this region for over 23 years, I think it's really funny to hear how regulated the marijuana industry is becoming. You guys obviously have no idea how regulated the wine industry is at the county, state, and federal level, and the level of obstacles put in our path to develop our tremendous wine quality, coming to the region to buy our wines and discovering while here the sheer beauty of its landscapes and its charming reminders of the rusticity of old California. These consumers are bringing their money by staying in our hotels, dining in our restaurants, and supporting the local economy. They are then going back home from wherever they came to share their stories about what a special place this is, and then this virtuous circle repeats itself again and again, so much so that we are now part of an almost $1.8 billion annual economy here in Santa Barbara County. The wine industry is not anti-marijuana here in Santa Barbara County. I'll say it again, the wine industry is not anti-marijuana. As a state, we voted to legalize it, but there have been obviously unintended consequences as we've all admitted. We must find a better balance between protecting established industries and the needs of an assent industry. The unchecked growth of marijuana with its toxic odors emanating from marijuana grows is threatening the entire wine tourism and ecotourism business in Santa Barbara County. If more stringent regulations do not happen that controls the odor of marijuana from leaving the property on Ag II lands, you will erode... I wish I could say that word. You will forever damage the wine industry and therefore destroy the tourism industry and all those revenues and taxes associated with it. Supervisor Legnino, you spoke of revenue shortfalls earlier. Please do not ruin this industry that already generates a significant amount of revenues, taxes, and jobs, and one that is only growing and becoming more successful.
I was telling you, your time's up. Sorry.
Really? Okay.
I heard my name, I was like, "Time's up."
Our next speaker is Jesse Saragoza.
You had me on my watch.
Oh, okay. Paul Kowalski to be followed by Liz Rogan.
Good evening, Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Paul Kowalski. I'm the chairman of the Cannabis Business Council of Santa Barbara County. I spoke before you in 2016 when you passed the resolution, and at that time Supervisor Adam made a comment about how Big Ag was going to come and just squash us, something along those lines. And for a number of years, it's kind of haunted me, not because Big Ag was going to come squash us, but because I really wasn't sure what Big Ag looked like. And in last month's issue of MG Magazine, it's an industry magazine, they have a fold-out that talks about the CBD market and the exponentially outpacing the cannabis industry by 22 billion by 2022. Anyway, they have a fold-out that I thought would interest you, 50 acres of hemp extraction a day. So this was to me something that started to look like Big Ag. I don't think Big Ag is here. I imagine it's on its way. And the cannabis industry is looking for your support. We need regulations and guidelines we can abide by. We are entering a global competition here where we need Supervisor Santa Barbara County to position us to compete not only nationally but internationally. I think we live in a period of time where there's a lot of change happening, and cannabis can provide a number of benefits from medical, nutritional, botanical, fiber, building materials, power sources, soil remediation, carbon sequestration. So as you go forward, we are asking that you enable us to compete and provide us with a regulation that we comply by and succeed. Thank you.
Is Liz Rogan still there? To be followed by Bruce Watkins.
Good afternoon, or early evening, Supervisors, and thank you for your time in continuing to do this because we've all been here all day. Sorry, I had a slideshow prepared, so unfortunately I don't get to show you that, so I'll do my best to kind of summarize what I was going to say. So I'm Liz Rogan. I'm the founder of the Cannabis Business Council of Santa Barbara County. We originally took the lead in working with you, all of you, to help craft this ordinance that we're talking about today. As you've said, we've spoken for probably over two, almost two years, if not more, in trying to figure this out. We've had over five public comment periods with ad hoc committee, and so this isn't new and we've talked about this. So we do appreciate your commitment, and I wanted to first thank you and the previous Board of Supervisors, because I know there's different people too, for all the time you've spent on this and the careful consideration. I just wanted to first off say that agriculture is a huge part of our community, as we know and we've been talking about a lot today. I also wanted to take a moment to remember a member of ours, John Stashenko, who you all knew, I think, and unfortunately he was killed in a car accident on the way home from a Santa Maria meeting. And so we just want to say thanks for all this time, and we remember you today, John, with us. So I wanted to address a couple of things you said, Supervisor Adams. We used to think that cigarettes were okay. Unfortunately, now we have more knowledge of these health risks from agriculture. Chemicals have effects just by being there. Sometimes you don't smell them, and these levels do build up over time, as we are seeing in current data. So despite challenges that we have, like with shit happening and other stuff, like other crops need to adapt better because this is the way we keep moving forward. These are public health hazards that scientists are now looking at and showing that this is what it is. It may not have been something that you thought was bad before, but now it is. Look at crops like in the Midwest, they have dicamba with soybeans. This pesticide drift is causing other negative effects on a lot of people. Thank you.
Bruce Watkins here to be followed by Gary Texarea.
Oh, not mine. Well, that's the Mars.
The yellow paper.
Yeah. You moved it. Am I good? Go to the meeting.
Thank you, Supervisors. Bruce Watkins. Problems can be fixed unless they've been correctly identified. Two fundamental problems aren't the ordinances. They are misinformation and misimplementation. On the misinformation, recent media on the industry here is disturbingly inaccurate, even inaccurately reporting on many of you Supervisors. And if it feels bad to be inaccurately described, professionals in the cannabis industry know how you feel. Following a year of rigorous public examination, you didn't give the cannabis industry everything we were asking for, and you didn't give opponents everything that they were looking for. You came to a compromised solution. A year and a half later, however, that framework that you voted to create still doesn't exist, and the public doesn't understand that. They thought you voted on something. They see a quagmire, incorrectly conclude that it represents what you intended, and you know, that leads, I believe, to a lot of calls to have ordinances changed. The county needs a proactive and sustained information campaign because misinformation is running rampant. Misimplementation amplifies misinformation. The procedural bottlenecks to application processing need an overhaul and a sense of urgency. Despite over 100 licensed applicants, almost nobody in the county has a license yet. A year later, this should be seen as a symptom of misinformation or misimplementation. And as an example, I was the first to file a CUP application in this county. That was one year ago this month. I still have zero idea of how and when I might get to the first public hearing on my applications. Now, every county staff I've worked with is professional, friendly, helpful, but nobody here seems to be able to define what I need to do next to get my application through and when that next step would take place. Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Gary Texarea.
Sher.
Sher.
That's right. You got to get down first.
To be followed by Jamie Sher.
That's right. My name is Gary Teshera. I'm a fifth-generation farmer in the Santa Maria Valley. My grandfathers came from Portugal in the late 1800s and started farming sheep and dry beans here. The next generations, we moved to dairies, sugarbeets, vegetables, vineyards, and wineries. Today, my two sons and my daughter run an organic blueberry and blackberry operation. There's one thing for sure in agriculture, it's that there is change. As more and more of us, our food supply is coming from Mexico, Chile, Peru, and Argentina. Our costs and our costs here in California go up every year, and we have to compete with other commodities and farming practices to survive. I'm nervous as hell. This is not what I normally do. None of us in agriculture know what it'll look like in the future. We have no idea, and our grandfathers did, what we'd be doing today. We do not grow hemp or cannabis, and I did not vote for it. But we may want to, in the time to come, and as the markets predict, as growers, we may need to, to survive. I do not want to see more government policy than we already have, and I do not want to see any caps on what we farm in our commodities in Santa Maria. I think once you start regulating commodities, it never ends well. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jack Visseri to be followed by Jazara Knight.
Got everyone in the screen.
Chair LaVineño, Supervisors, I'm here to announce the North County Farmers Guild is organizing a new annual event called the Santa Barbara County Sun Grown Festival. This event is an effort to foster community relations, education, and promotion of the legal cannabis industry in our community. The event will showcase and celebrate farmers and produce from both the cannabis and non-cannabis industries. We hope to further connect our community with common fundamental values such as love for the land, love for the miracle of growing, a dedication to making the community a model for responsible and cooperative farming. Plans are underway to host this day-long festival in North County of Santa Barbara in the fall of 2020. A kickoff event is in development for this fall, where initial plans will be unveiled and founding participants and sponsors will be announced. The Santa Barbara County Sun Grown Festival is collaborating with a team of experienced and professional partners to produce this event. These professionals have a track record of success cultivating collaborative partnerships with the communities in which they work. The Santa Barbara County Sun Grown Festival will feature some of the finest locally grown legal cannabis, along many of the region's most celebrated organic produce, and more. Please consider all of yourselves invited.
Our next speaker is Jazara Knight. Carmela Beck.
Sergio's in the house.
Oh, Sergio. Sergio Gallo to be followed by Angelo Bella.
Good afternoon, everyone. First off, I was not planning to come up here and speak. I do not have a speech ready, but the weed industry, I support the weed industry as affecting my life positively in many ways. I feel like it's a blessing. I feel very fortunate to have ended up where I ended up. I work with a lot of very professional people, good environment, could go out there about the good things. I'm a little nervous, excuse me.
Don't worry about it.
One of the things that I wanted to talk about is the fact that not only does this job help me, but it also helps my son. It has opened up a lot of doors, a lot of opportunities that I did not have before. And anytime a new door opens, my son walks in with me. So this industry is not just helping growers and employees, but it's also helping thousands of families. And I just want to thank, I want to thank every cannabis industry for making a positive impact to thousands of lives. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Angelo Bella to be followed by Carmela Beck.
Good day. Thanks again for having me up here. I know you guys, your eyes, ears aren't bleeding yet, so I think we're all good. We're almost there. My name's Angelo Bella. I'm Director of Compliance and Traceability for Farm in San Ynez. One of the things I didn't get to talk about last time that I really want to touch base with you is, one of the goals for recreational cannabis, and even the medical cannabis markets in these states that are implementing them, is to eliminate the black market, right? That was one of the major probes to legalize in, was to capture tax revenue and to funnel that out of organized crime and into the coffers of local municipalities. The licensing process by nature is complicated and costly, right? By nature, any business or organization who's able to obtain a license should be considered one of the good actors in our industry. And those good actors need to be supported by their local governments and given the opportunity to establish normal and best business practices while navigating the already complicated regulations and rules. As I said earlier, the frequent changes to the rules and regs inhibit companies' ability to establish these best practices and in turn become sustainable and ultimately profitable. We need companies to be sustainable and profitable in order to ultimately eliminate said black Lastly, I want to just talk about, seems that everybody who is here and talking are the people who are considered good actors. The people who aren't here talking are the ones who are the bad actors. So even though we have people on both sides of the issue here, really I think we're all on the same team. The people who are here talking and giving their opinions are the ones who are trying to do their best and do their due diligence and responsible growers for the people who are expressing their concerns and their issues. I just want to kind of highlight that, just to make sure that, you know, we're all on the same team, and ultimately we all have the same goal and same agenda. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Carmela Beck to be followed by Stephen Wiley.
So, good afternoon. I'd like to thank the Board for taking the time to carefully consider today's public comment. My name is Carmela Beck. I work for a family cannabis farm in Beulahton, California as the compliance officer. I recently relocated from Watsonville, California to Long Po, where I worked for 10 years at Driscoll's as their organic program manager overseeing all organic strawberry, raspberry, blackberry, and blueberry organic compliance certification, inspection issues throughout the U.S., Mexico, and Chile. I'm here today because I love agriculture, because I'm proud to work on a local family cannabis farm, and I want to see Santa Barbara County's highly regulated legal cannabis farmers thrive. I have three points to make. One, I'm just going to say, do not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Do not adopt new amendments at this time. Don't implement any bans. Let the vetted and voted on regulation play itself out. Don't strangle our nascent, highly regulated cannabis industry further with costly restrictions. Two, treat cannabis like any other agricultural commodity. There is room for all agriculture in the county. There's room through the berries, the row crops, the vineyards, cannabis, and avocados, among others. Cannabis farmers are not threatening. We're not the enemy, we're good farmers, and we are great neighbors. Quite honestly, the "not in my backyard" undertone of anti-cannabis supporters is elitist and it's offensive. Three, do not cripple the cannabis job boom. Hello? Cannabis jobs are really good jobs. It's hella expensive to live in California, and Santa Barbara County's cost of living is egregious. Allow us women, minorities, and others to access quality, well-paid jobs with the opportunity for growth, senior management positions, and the ability to make an honest living. In closing, I'd ask that the Board of Supervisors reflect on their mission statement and the deliberations today, which reads, "Provide quality public service to the people of Santa Barbara County in response to their need for a healthy, safe, and prosperous environment, and to establish and maintain a workforce which reflects the diversity of the community." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Wiley to be followed by Tina Finucci Rotato.
Good evening. Thanks for a long day of public service. I'm Stephen Wiley. I've been a land use and public lawyer in Santa Barbara for 36 years. Right now, I have several HOA clients, in Galena, in Carpinteria, all in the coastal zone. They called me several months ago, very concerned about this issue, concerned to the point they were doing special assessments to pay for me and others to study this issue, to follow this issue. Your staff report contains a bullet point listing of the recommendations provided to you by the cities of Carpinteria and Galena. Your staff presentation summarized the bullet points as well. But unfortunately, they missed possibly the most important one, and that was the city of Galena, the city of Carpinteria, and in fact, your own planning commission, all on 50 votes, recommended that you have the same regulations in the coastal zone as you do in the inland. But one of the speakers earlier said it's appropriate to have distinctions between the coastal zone and inland. I don't think she meant, or focused on the fact that if anything, it should be more restrictive in the coastal zone. I hate to mention the LA Times, but you may have seen the article in last Sunday's paper about the Boshing coastline. We all know this is a very real issue. It's, you know, these photos show how real this is. You've got a situation now in the eastern Galena Valley where you've got 21 Ag-1 parcels that can get cultivation permits, whereas if the inland now with your decision earlier today, they can't. I'm just urging you, weed friends today when you deliberate, to address this issue. Do you want to have a difference within the coastal zone and the inland zone? Is it appropriate? And finally, I mean, I know there's a concern that, well, we don't want to open up everything again with the coastal commission. They looked at your ordinance, May of 2018. There is no good reason to think they want to take a long look again, and there's no good reason to think this wouldn't be a minor amendment, like the minor amendment you're already sending to them in your decision earlier today. Is that my time?
Yep. Thank you.
Is Tina Finucci from Toto here? Kristy Solis. Kathy Joseph. To be followed by Aaron Weber, who is our final speaker.
Whoa. [applause]
Well, for the Supervisors, thank you very much for your attention and time. My name is Kathy Joseph. I started my winery over 30 years here in Santa Barbara County. I bought land in what's now called the Santa Rita Hills and helped bring fame to the district for the great Pinot Noirs that we're making today. I have a mature vineyard. I provide jobs. We provide health benefits. We pay our taxes also. also. My vineyard is sustainably certified under the SIP program, and just even to start the vineyard, we're lucky if we get a mature vineyard in seven years. We get a single crop every year, and we spend the entire year nurturing what we harvest at the end of that year. I live on the property, I'm very much a part of the vineyard and the winery. We're very cautious about our operations. Our spray program is, we're incredibly diligent about it, we follow all the rules and the regulations, and as you mentioned earlier, even when you spray in five mile-per-hour winds, there is minor but occasional drift. This past March, after 20-plus years of farming, I had a very large grow move in as my next-door neighbor, probably a 70-acre grow. It emerged very quickly. Of course, I had persistent aromas on my home property, and I am extremely concerned about any drift that might come in my direction on what is now my livelihood that I have built over 30 years. There are no setback requirements, and where I'm concerned about what might come from my neighbor, my neighbor is also concerned about what I might contribute to their property. Therefore, I've been, is that the end?
That's your time.
Oh, sorry?
That was your time.
Oh, I've been spied on, trust guessed upon, and aggressively approached by my neighbors, and I'm not feeling the neighborly love. So please, please, please help me have good neighbors. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Erin Weber.
Evening, Supervisors, thank you for your time. I'm here to address the issue of more restrictive policies on Ag One in the coastal zone, and I'm here to tell you that we have that. So for example, we have one permit that we've been processing.
Hold on a second here. Ma'am? Sorry. It's, it's really small in here. Okay, go ahead.
So for example, one permit application that we submitted back in December of last year, we still do not anticipate a permit approval until September of this year. That is nine months down the road, and that does not include a possible appeal to the planning commission, which could be a three-month additional delay, an appeal to your board, the Board of Supervisors, which could be an additional three-month delay, and possibly even a coastal commission appeal, which would be another four to six months after that. You have an extraordinarily robust process for cannabis operators. As you know, this includes compliance with archaeological surveys, biological surveys, traffic studies, air quality studies, water quality studies, noise studies, et cetera, et cetera. And additionally, Ag One farms in the Carpinteria area have something that the inland farms do not have, and that is the carb-ag overlay. And this is so restrictive for the cannabis farms that are trying to go through this process that something so small as a water tank could trigger you into a development plan, which requires you to have your first permit approval at the planning commission. Which takes me to my next point, which is that your planning commission is already extraordinarily overburdened with the amount of cannabis projects that are about to come through. So we would just really encourage you to think carefully about any changes to the existing regulatory framework that would change. The permits that are required now, which in the inland area is a CDP, and in, I'm sorry, in the inland area, it's an LUP, and in coastal zone, it's a CDP. The public already has ample opportunities to participate. All those permits that are applicable, please think carefully about any changes to the existing framework. Thank you.
Thanks.
And that was our final speaker.
Okay, so y'all made it. So instead of us doing deliberations now, what we're going to go ahead and do is, we will continue this meeting until July 16 in Santa Barbara. I don't know what our agenda looks like at that point, but we'll figure it out, and I don't know how people will be posted. Well, it'll be on the agenda, so just not sure where exactly it'll be in the agenda, but. Thank you for coming today, and you would have to have a vote to.
Just to adjourn.
To adjourn, all right? We are adjourning this meeting.
Don't move.
Don't move. Second is, we're all in favor, you're all in favors. July 16th in Santa Barbara. If you would like to give your names and jacket.